Yes, I'm here.
How are you feeling, Don?
Well, better today than I did yesterday or two days ago.
That's good.
Question is, who is that? Oh, excuse me.
That stinks. I don't remember the, is that the last? You're the best.
Megan.
I don't know which one. That one's good. That one's good. Okay. Being at school all day, I'm like, whoa, that is like too much, my limit.
In my email absence, somehow I filled out the email list for about.
Really?
Because all of a sudden, I said, if I haven't got any emails and I spoke to Jackie about it, she sent me a test email, which I didn't get, and she had capitalized for some reason the letters, some of the letters.
Oh, no.
And it didn't recognize it, which, did anything transpire with St. Phillips in my seventy-five day absence from the, from the computer?
No, they haven't come in with an application yet.
Okay. Oh, it's not crackle.
Where's the little guy, um, what if I password?
The guest password.
It's guest. Which one is it? Wascassett Guest?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's just Wascassett.
Two, three, four. We're in a circle of death right now.
It's a town office all over. I'll be pleased if it works.
Let's see. Yeah, it's working.
This is kind of.
Beautiful, I think so.
Took us months.
Thank you.
Life is good.
Good to me.
A lot of work in that. I wrote all the changes today.
That's why I put together the summary sheet and I'm gonna, I'll tweak it when it goes to this law court and give a little bit more context. Um, and hopefully that will give them enough background and understanding so that the ordinance changes aren't too cumbersome for them to get for. And I figured I could give up, if he wants to dedicate time to it on the nineteenth, I could give kind of a intro presentation. That way they're not diving in with changes. And you have to talk through the intent of what everything is.
So, what's the change?
So, when we originally wrote it, the way the language was written, it created an unintended gray area where it appears, if you read it like as the letter of the law, that roof mounted solar, so if you're putting solar in your house or if you were gonna put a small ground mounted panel system, it could only go in the rural district versus anywhere in town. So, we, essentially the changes you got from me today clarify that, um, as well as clarify that they don't have to go through site plan review. It would be through a building permit with the co enforcement officer.
For a small solar.
For small solar, so if you're putting it on your garage or your house, um, or if you were gonna do a small, like a pretty small scale, just ground mount, kind of like what Morris Farm has, that that ground mount, that you could do that in other districts, and also you wouldn't have to go through a full site plan, like, you know, because obviously there's a big difference between those and the large solar, nothing changes. They still have to go for site plan review, they have all the requirements that are in the solar ordinance they still need to meet. So, like the project that's being developed at the airport or the one we permitted in Gardner Road last year, earlier this year, I don't remember when that was.
But the way it was written, we've already run into this problem. Because the way it was written, with somebody that wanted to do one of these small ground mounted systems on Route One, and the way I interpreted it, and then the way Emily interprets it, and then the way Carl interprets it, it can't happen because that one sentence says, yep, so we just want to clarify it, make it easier. Because I'm sure that wasn't what we planned.
No.
I have a question. If we're in a public hearing at the next planning board meeting, can I get the form sent today?
Yeah, that's a point. I think if you send it to him first thing tomorrow morning, though.
Yeah.
I know Susan has allowed that, confirmed that that is allowed in the past, like, who's sending it either tonight or first thing in the morning.
Yeah, sometimes.
Yep.
And will that be a toll? The next meeting, do the eleven. For some reason, my calendar switched all the ordinance committee meetings to the Tuesday. Oh, really? Yes, and I, I know, it's really odd. So, I have a.
It's good to have a mind of their own.
They do.
What you drink briefly on that?
Yeah, I, we're gonna go through it in detail tonight, and I know it's a lot, but it's also, you've been looking at essentially the same thing since April. Not the only thing that changed, but some wordsmithing changes to incorporate what came out of the adopt, or excuse me, the amended final rule at the beginning of October.
Right. The, there's, there's one place where I think you have twenty twenty-three and I think you have twenty twenty-four.
There's a couple of those that I have to clean up, but I wanted to get this out too.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. And then the other question.
I was gonna say, we haven't started the meeting yet, but.
I, I didn't see where, um, solar panels would be allowed under one.
They're in every district. I wrote it as every district, the small ones.
Okay.
The small systems.
Right, but not the.
That's something we can talk about, but the one that wanted to go under one would be one of these less than forty-two hundred square foot.
Oh, it'd be small. Oh, I didn't know. Yes, as I've seen.
Because I don't know that, I mean, the ORC can talk about it, but I don't know that the ORC wants to do.
Yeah. Panel space.
I don't know that you wanna have like a solar farm on Route One, that would be something to discuss as an ORC or the.
That's what I thought was happening, so that's why.
So she roused me up with the whip, once she got me back on email.
Been getting my emails now, right?
This week.
It's, it's, it's really weird that I had that other.
I thought you didn't like me.
I always called you.
We've reestablished our relationship.
Oh, great.
It doesn't work, so, yeah. I got really low. The bars are showing, but then it says offline. I don't know, it's really. I don't know.
Is Carl supposed to be here?
I think so, I was just checking to make sure.
I'm hoping he'll be here right.
It's not over here, right?
I can't, I can't, AMD, I can't drive at night, can't see, I don't have to drive at night. So.
So, whatever, it has to stop him. But true.
Trying to arrange my schedule, and my daughter's schedule, is she's, she writes for the County Journal. And sometimes her stuff is in the, what was her cell, she did that whole thing on the murder trial of the, in that. So, we never knew when the jury would go out and whether she could pick me up.
Never was. If you don't mind some dog, okay, you're more than welcome to ride home. I'll even let you ride a front there after they went the freight back. My tenant at the Candyman called me up one day, he said, I'm coming up with my son-in-law. We're gonna fly up, would you pick us up and do his pass at airport and take us to the church on Route One? I said, sure, and I show up in my truck, which only has two seats in the front, all kinds of tools in the back and chains and stuff. And four people come off this little plane.
Oh, wow.
And three of them lined up in the back of my truck, so I drive them to the church, drop them off, and I quick run home and swap cars with my wife, at least we uncomfortably all get into the one car with seats. And I would go back to the church, it's like thirty minutes into the service, and I very quietly walk in and sit down near the back. Service ends and the pastor comes right over to me, well, people goes, now, we're so happy that you joined us today, he said, but I have to tell you that in the twenties, the organist must have known when you walked in. It's very funny.
Is Carl not coming?
He's calling.
Yeah, I just checked my email too, I haven't seen anything from him, which is unusual.
He gave up on me.
I can open the documents, I just can't do anything with it. Yeah, I know. So I went to fix it on my calendar, but I'm not, I can't open it.
Did you send a bunch of documents?
I did, but I have all hard copies for everyone too.
I haven't gotten them to.
That's okay.
Not that I might, I don't like that.
That's all right, we're gonna go through it, which actually, I don't know if we're gonna, because Don's on Zoom, Jackie, so I think he'll have a quorum. So, we want, because Don's on. You're still there, Don, right?
I'm still here. Just sitting quietly.
Derek Laura, I can't, it's not working.
Yeah, that's okay. Paper copies, I can, I can at least view it, that's fine.
Contact Crystal Arms.
Are you trying to go in?
Come call.
Okay.
So while we're waiting, um, I'm a little stuck. If I was here and some of this was discussed.
It's not available, please leave your message.
Ask questions, or should I have seen? Oh, no, you can fill it, yeah, no, you can ask questions.
Hey, Paul, we're over at OSC, we're wondering if you can come in. That's the story. You know what? What's good start, we have, Paul, we have a quorum. It's gonna be temporarily start the meeting.
I think, Jackie, can we have?
If I can't, at five forty.
Sit here for a minute and make sure Don.
Don stays on.
At five forty PM, I start the OSC meeting, and I immediately turn it over in good hands. And this Emily, who is prepared well, well, our homework for us for tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. So, what I'm hoping to get from you tonight is an approval to advance this to a public hearing for December eleventh by the planning board. So that after the public hearing, you can then get it on the select board agenda for the nineteenth, in hopes that we make the December twenty-seventh deadline for the March fifth, twenty twenty-four warrant. That way, if there's any pickups in voting, we still don't have time to make any changes and get it on the June ballot before the July first, twenty twenty-four implementation deadline that the state's put in place for LD two thousand and three. Um, a lot of this we've looked at over the past several months, um, I just put it in kind of a final form packet for you. And then I prepared a summary sheet for you because we've changed a number of different sections of different articles. So if we're gonna go in kind of numerical order, the first handout, um, that we have is Article Two, which is the building laws section of the building ordinance. Don, I, when I made all the attachments this afternoon, I also tried to attach them in order, so hopefully they came through that way. So you'll see the summary memo first, and then the next attachment should be final draft Article Two, LD two thousand and three changes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. This is of the whole packet, so this is all the attachments that you got this afternoon. So, you'll see at the bottom of the first page, um, there's just a reference to, um, affordable housing development shall conform to a certain section of the ordinance. I did that in line with, we have the same kind of language for other housing development types, such as two-family homes, elder congregant housing and congregant housing, so I just wanted, for consistency sake, add that line there. Um, and I recognize that's gotta be changed to month and then twenty-four. And then kind of the, the meat of the change in Article Two is around parking. So originally, the ordinance was a little bit vague and open-ended in that it just required that lots shall provide adequate off-street parking for whatever the use may be. So at the directive of some select word feedback, we created a, um, schedule of off-street parking requirements as well as some information on parking space size that has been pulled from subdivision ordinance, and so it's actually in here as well, so. This we worked on, I think, throughout the summer a little bit, we just haven't had a forum to actually approve it. But this should look familiar to most of you, so we kept the uses somewhat generalized. We took this from the, um, building, the national, international building code, um, essentially. And so we have, you know, residential uses, it should be two per dwelling unit. Institutionally uses, we have a school or assembly. Commercial uses, again, pretty generalized, hotel motel, medical office, office, restaurant, retail, industrial uses, and then, um, other uses, we had agreed, like, excuse me, some language around, you know, sufficient spaces to accommodate the normal parking demand as determined by the planning board. Because you, any of, most of these projects would be going for site plan review where a traffic study and analysis would be required as part of the approval. And so a more sufficient number could be determined if it doesn't fall cleanly within one of the other uses described here in the parking schedule. I did add a note that is also described when we get to accessory dwelling units. LD two thousand and three does not allow us to require additional parking, off-street parking spaces. So there is a note there that if someone's proposing an ADU located on a lot that contains a single-family dwelling, we can't require, you know, another two spaces above and beyond the two that are required for the main residence. I don't know if you have any questions around that one before we move on to, um, the next part of Article Two.
I don't have any questions.
Thanks, Don. So if you keep moving along, I created a section two point nine, which talks about, so if we look at LD two thousand and three, there's kind of three buckets. There's affordable housing development bucket and rules that are associated with that. There is additional dwelling units, which we'll get to shortly, and then there's accessory dwelling units. So this is really tied to that first bucket around, if someone is coming in and proposing a affordable housing development, and it's gonna be long-term affordable, so they have a covenant restriction that it needs to maintain affordability for a certain number of years, typically between fifteen and thirty years. They have income restrictions and who can rent or purchase the affordable units. And the majority of those units are going to be that designated affordable, so that long-term affordability. They are, under LD two thousand and three, eligible for a density bonus. So they could get two and a half times the density, um, as what is typically required within the area that they are developing.
Provided they're gonna stay low income for fifteen to thirty years.
Right. They also get a reduction in the parking allowance, which is why we wanted to create that table, so we have something to calculate out, you know, what are the number of parking spaces that are required, so you can then calculate the reduction in parking off of a number versus something that's a little more subjective, like we had in the ordinance initially. So this section two point nine describes all of that essentially in detail, and a lot of this language is pulled directly from the, uh, final rulemaking that came out of LD two thousand and three. And so it talks about, you know, like I said, that the minimum of fifty-one percent of the total units on the lot are affordable, what that affordability means, it has to be located within a town's growth area, designated growth area, which would be in our comp plan, or it would need to be served by public water and sewer, so it limits where in town it could go. And that it has to also be located in an area where multifamily dwellings are allowed within an ordinance, and they still have to comply with minimum lot size requirement, so it's not like they can develop a lot that's considered non-conforming and is too small. You know, they still have to comply with the other, um, density requirements that are tied, and zoning requirements that are tied to this. Um, and then they have to provide, you know, written verification that they can actually connect to adequate sewer and water. And, um, it also talks about that long-term affordability piece where, before a strategic occupancy key be granted, they would have to submit and executed, which means it would be filed at the county courthouse, restrictive covenant on the property for those units to maintain that long-term affordability. And so for rental housing, occupancy of all the units designated affordable would be remained limited to households at or below eighty percent of the local area median income. And for owned housing, that would be a hundred and twenty percent of the local area median income. And those percentages come from main housing, which is our state housing authority, so it's in line with what the state requires. Um, and then section two point nine point three just describes the density bonus in more detail, as well as the production and parking requirements. Does anyone have any questions about the overall theory, if you will, around the, um, affordable housing requirements and what LD two thousand and three requires or how it's been written into the ordinance? Or any wordsmithing changes? Can you see a typo? Please tell me.
It was fifteen to thirty-year commitment, to be honest with you. That to me makes it a worthwhile thing to allow for the extra benefit, it makes sense because i- it may strain the school slightly, but other than that, I, I see it as a positive thing for the town and, uh, it'll allow more working people to live here and spend here and support us.
So, but you put it in here straight up, thirty years.
I think that came from, um, directly from LD two thousand and three. I give the fifteen to thirty year because depending on what grants, and this kind of gets in the weeds, but depending on what grants or funding they get from main housing determines the long-term affordability. I think most that would get this, the developments that would get this, would have to have the, would be going for grant funding that would require the thirty years. So I misspoke, um, a little bit, but more from the, the grant world that I also live in.
I love you.
I just wondered about the, the parking, when you have two, two off-street parking spaces for every street dwelling unit. Are you expecting somebody that doesn't get a car or?
Well. Well, so we can't change that number, but the theory behind it in offering the reduction in parking is that in planning world and zoning world over the past forty years, I'd say, we, in the planning world, have designed development for the maximum amount of parking that you could possibly ever imagine. So if you're picturing like retail establishments, what is Walmart on Black Friday gonna need for parking versus what's in reality something that's probably more in line with everyday use? So not everyone in these units is gonna have two cars. Some may have no car, they may rely on public transit or want to live in a walkable neighborhood and not have a vehicle. And so, the thought process behind when they were writing LD two thousand and three was around that, was let's flip the script a little bit in terms of more traditional zoning, where you were designing and have this massive amount of parking that never gets used except maybe one time a year. Um, and actually design for something that is more, uh, in line with the actual use and what actually ends up happening in terms of the parking needs. Is that a fair description?
I just don't see that it's gonna work.
I've heard that comment from other towns, unfortunately, this is the requirement that LD two thousand and three is required, so we can't change that number. And is everything in here red, a requirement? Yes, so everything in red is a change and it's tied to that LD two thousand and three. Hello. We are going through, so this is a summary, and then we are on the first staple bulletin, we're talking, we just went through the parking, and now we are talking about the affordable housing development density bonus. Jack, who was just asking a question about the reduction in parking requirements, if, so if you have that long-term affordable development that you're building, that you get, um, a reduction in parking requirements to no more than two off-street parking spaces for every street dwelling units? And kind of what is the state's logic behind that?
You know, just end up parking on the street.
Unless the street doesn't offer any cars, how does it have parking?
That answers my question.
And this also doesn't necessarily mean that the developer has to go with that reduction in parking either. They may, you know, be doing their own studies, they actually wanna put a little bit more parking in. But the thought behind this is, you know, flipping the script on kind of that planning theory around build to maximum and maybe never use it, but also it reduces, if you don't have to clear and pour down, you know, a, a parking surface that's that extensive, you can better, you can hopefully put in, you know, more room for more units or have a little. Or have a little bit more green space on your property and it lowers your your overall costs too. Can we, this is just a question because I wasn't here. But can we limit how many? I don't know how to word this, how many affordable housing units or dwellings we can have in in town? Can we limit that number? You can't limit the overall number. But what will, what is expected to happen is there's going to, anyone that's developing, especially one of these. Is going to be doing some sort of market analysis to see like what unit, how many units are needed. What can they build in terms of the economics of it and still maintain that affordability? And so I think there is a place for them in natural market to play a role as well as your zoning. You know, they still have to comply with setbacks, lot coverage requirements. They do get the density bonus, but they still have to make sure, you know, that they're not building, you know, past your thirty five feet maximum. Those type of things will slow and also make sure that the septic is designed, which takes up a lot of area as well. So I think there are other ways that are going to limit it naturally. And then you'll see, I decided to change some numbers to sneak in the two point nine and make it tie in. The reason I put it as two point nine was that we talked about congregate housing, elderly congregate housing immediately before this. And so it felt like a natural way to roll in the affordable housing density bonus piece. So you'll see the rest of this section in Article two is just changing of all the numbers that follow. Any other questions on? Article two changes, whether it's parking or the affordable density?
I don't have any changes or any comments.
So the next in your packet will roll over to zoning. So at the top you'll see, it says page sixty, from the one we're looking at. So given that we're talking about zoning, it made sense to put development standards for accessory dwelling units within this section. And so under LD two thousand three, we are required to allow that any lot that has a single family dwelling unit on it. Be allowed an accessory dwelling unit as well. We could allow them to have more than one. I put one just because that's what LD two thousand three states. And that unit, while they don't have to comply, they don't need an additional lot area. So if we have one acre, if it's located in the. Commercial district, which has one acre zoning, you can't require that they need two acres in order to have a house and an accessory dwelling unit. It can be built within that one acre. Or what was recently clarified in the final rulemaking is that even if they have a nonconforming lot. If they can make everything else work in terms of setbacks, lot coverage, their sanitary system, their water supply. That they could still put an accessory dwelling unit on there without considering it an expansion of the nonconformity. So that's described in here as well. Is that it must comply with setbacks that are described in, you know, Article two, section two point five, which is, you know, all of your your table of setbacks. That it's exempt from, you know, density and minimum lot area requirements. So you're only, if you, if the zoning says it's only single family, you have to allow that accessory dwelling unit. It also clarifies that you could build an accessory dwelling unit in a couple of different ways. You could locate it within the house that already exists. So whether you were converting your basement into an accessory unit or your attic, for example. You could attach it to your existing unit. So if you were going to build off the back and you, it shared a wall, that could be done. Or it could be a new structure on the lot, so not attached to the house at all. And similar to the note on the parking schedule. I clarify in here that an accessory dwelling unit cannot be subject to any additional off street parking requirements. Beyond what's required for that single family unit. LD two thousand three also requires that the minimum be one hundred and ninety square feet in size. And that's so that if someone wanted to count tiny home as their accessory unit, they could do so. And the feedback we received from the select board around. Do we want to create a maximum size was that it made sense in the village area? So we will see nine point seven. I am in some language around what the maximum should be. Which the select board, their feedback was that it could be kind of an either or. So it's either a percentage of the existing unit on the parcel up to a certain square footage. So the way nine point seven is written is that in the village one, village two and village waterfront districts. An accessory dwelling unit shall be no larger than forty percent of the finished and heated portion of the single family dwelling on the parcel. Up to a thousand square feet, whichever is less. So if you have like, you know, one of the larger homes in the village that's maybe three thousand or four thousand square feet. You don't, forty percent of that is still a pretty big accessory dwelling unit, so they would be limited to that thousand square foot.
In that district.
In that district. If you are outside of village one, village two or village waterfront. The select board did not want to have a maximum size for accessory dwelling units. So you'll see the second part of that sentence in nine point seven is no maximum size for an accessory dwelling unit is required in all other districts. So long as the unit is smaller than the finished and heated portion of the single family dwelling unit on the parcel. And that's essentially because an accessory dwelling unit needs to be accessory to the single family unit. If it's larger than that, it kind of turns into the principal unit. So that clarifying language was added in.
So why can't I go over on the house on my property like my original list?
I was just going to ask the same question.
I guess it could, like in theory. But I don't know that if you're in village one, village two, you would probably wouldn't be able to because it's limited to size. I'd ask, that was something the selector kind of went around about and I got the sense, I don't know if you got the same sense. But they have absolutely no interest in limiting property rights. Out in areas outside the village. So if someone wants to build a four thousand square foot home and count their two thousand square foot home as their accessory. Then that would be allowed in, for example, like the rural residential district.
And you say, you say an apartment building can't have an accessory dwelling?
Yes, that's correct. Cause you can't, one of the other things you'll see as we go through this, we'll jump a little bit, but nine point ten. So you can't double dip. So you can essentially do the, which we'll get to next, is the additional dwelling unit. And an accessory unit, you either or. So if you qualify for the additional dwelling unit. So you have, if we go back to the example of, you know, one acre lot minimum, I have two acres. I could, in theory, under the dwelling unit allowance section, which is section ten, which we'll get to next, build another home. I can't then also turn around and build an accessory unit for each of those dwelling units as well. The town could choose to do that, but the feedback I think I've gotten from the select board and the ORC has been, we don't want to allow the double dip. You could always be more lenient later, but starting more restrictive is not a bad idea.
I agree.
And I guess what is, what is our position as far as? If we, if the selectmen want something, but we see things differently. What do we do with that? How does that work?
That's a good question, and I don't think, that's more of a you.
I asked because I've gotten like.
No, that's okay.
It's the selectman's warrant.
What does that mean?
It's, it has to go on a warrant drafted by the select board. And if they don't like this ordinance, they don't have to put it on there.
This just gets passed the oath of their approval. Then they can make changes at the last minute to one or two things, as long as it doesn't conflict with the state law.
Right.
And in my time on this, I've always, I've never run into where. I was such a profoundly different from what the select want written that I just want to state your opinion.
I think I'm struggling with not having a limit as far as the size in a, in the rural part of this town. I'm struggling with that. Cause you could essentially, like you said, put a four thousand four square foot home and have then the other dwelling be.
Thirty nine hundred square feet.
Exactly, and I, I don't agree with that.
And then the town gets a lot more tax relief because they get the tax code, both pro, you know.
But as a property owner, I guess I would be kind of like that.
If it's your next door neighbor.
Exactly.
But it's got to read the setbacks.
Which is only ten feet, is that correct?
Fifteen, you know, just change it?
No, we haven't changed it. I hope so.
But it's not there yet.
Can we make it from the road to, not just fifteen from the road?
Something two fifty thirty feet away from, you know, there's fifteen feet on each side.
So I guess I don't know if do that, because I don't agree with that. I don't, so I don't know. I don't know if I just voice it and that's it, like I don't know, I don't know if the protocol is with this. There would be a public hearing, we love it, hope to if we move forward. So I would think you would be able to, to the planning board, so I would think you could voice a opinion there. And depending on if there's other public comment, I don't know historically if the select board have taken, you know, if there's kind of. A significant public opinion out of a public hearing that has differed from kind of the directive the ORC has gotten from the select board. If they reconsider, I don't know if.
I don't know, we never, we certainly haven't run into that since I've been here. Where there's been, but I think it.
There's usually no comment.
There usually is. But I think if.
Well, that's why there's no comment.
But I think if there's significant pushback from the public on this, yes, I would think they would, they would want to listen to that and take that into consideration. And may ask or just make the change.
I don't know if do that, what do I, what do I do with that? What does that mean?
You go to the select board meeting, you hold up the sign.
Oh, okay.
You just hold down the select board meeting and raise your hand to speaker better.
Or also speak at the public hearing for the planning board. So if if the ORC votes tonight to advance these two public hearing on December eleventh. It's the public hearing is through the planning board. And then whatever the outcomes of that are, including the drafts, would go to the select board on December nineteenth. So I would think.
Our recommendations go to the planning board?
Like whatever you approve tonight.
Trying changes have to be at the public hearing.
This is a public hearing that's held through.
And the planning board should go to the public hearing.
And you can speak.
I mean, you can always vote against it tonight.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
You can vote against it tonight, you can speak against it, go to the hearing.
I mean, and if enough people in the ORC don't like it tonight, I guess you could probably change it tonight and. Getting into, getting into the weeds here. I know, that's why I kind of want to get this done in March, not wait until June.
There's a lot of towns that are concerned from. And I've used Brookway Harbor as an example.
I guess, you personally, I haven't given a whole lot of thought, I'm not sure how this whole thing would shake out. How it's actually going to end up working.
Yeah, I know, and I'm still learning too.
I was going to say, a bunch are, are we just going to be trips and drafts? The passing of, I don't know, ordinance are flooded with applications. And I think, and I do think, you know, some of the other zoning stuff is is going to limit this anyways. Like you said, the, you know, the area, the area, the setbacks and the size of the septic system that they would need. Is, they're going to bump up against that, so it's, it's going to be kind of self limiting, just, just from those respects.
It almost means if you're adding on, it pretty much, you're really going to expand your septic, you know. Tremendously, essentially doubling it.
If you can.
Or you have a second, oh, wait, there's already a well on that property. You've got to have a hundred feet separation, so the well.
Even if there isn't?
On the current one, your new one would have to be.
And then that would.
And then there's can a well, since almost all these would be on well, can a well?
Support.
Support it, or are we talking about another well on the property? So there's a lot of.
Some other smoothie going there.
I mean, I've seen four interlaced that are hard to get built in, and to apply, and towns that have built in opelos.
So I think those, some of those things should. Help to ease your fears a little bit.
And is there any talk of changing the zoning requirements?
Here now?
Well. So I'd say they won't happen down the road, and that's.
So we make that change, we change stuff all the time.
Change stuff all the time.
We're probably going to change to solo ordinance.
Yeah, that's a, next on your agenda.
And they're changing because. The ordinance is originally, I mean.
We have what we said.
Solo ordinances are, are sole tower or. All kinds of things that weren't ever thought of, so the ordinance has had to be adopted. And then found out in execution that.
Yeah, it didn't quite work out the way we thought it was going to. Certainly would have worked.
So are there any other questions about accessory dwelling units and what's been drafted? So the next piece, again, we created a section, essentially a section ten, where we talk about dwelling unit allowance. So this is that kind of third bucket in LD two thousand three. So we've talked about the designated affordable, we've talked about accessory dwelling units. And now this is the dwelling, additional dwelling units. And so what essentially this is, is what I talked about a little bit ago. Where the, a property owner, if they have additional, you know, minimum acreage, they have, you know, can meet the setbacks. Everything else that's required, they could build another dwelling unit on their property. And so that's what this section speaks to. Now, it, it depends on how many units you can build up. If you have a lot that, so say you're in one acre zoning and you are located in a designated growth area that's been identified in the comp plan. You have to be in growth area. You could build and it contains no dwelling unit, so it's a vacant lot. So it's one acre zoning minimum, you have say four acres or more. You could, in theory, build up to four units, so long as, you know, again, you can meet those setbacks, you can make your septic work, your well work or wells work. However, you want to develop it, in theory, you could get up to four units if you have that lot in a designated growth area. One of the things that I just learned about last week from DECD during one of their listening sessions was that if we want to. The four units, there is nothing telling the towns that they can't regulate it so that it's contained within one building. So it's a quadplex versus four separate buildings. I have not written that in here because I felt like it's something that needs to come from the ORC. I didn't want to make that change because it is kind of a big change without speaking to you. But certainly if that's something you want to consider, we can write, like, I can write language into it. You know, tonight after the planning board meeting or tomorrow morning.
So to use a complex or whatever it's called. Is that in addition to the main towns, or is one of those the main?
One of them would be, yes. Yeah, so if, because you're, you're doing this on a vacant lot. So you can build four units. If there's no accessory versus main, it's just four dwelling units. If you can make it work, but there's nothing telling the towns that it has to be four separate buildings. You could require that it all be contained within a single structure.
And one would have to be larger than the others?
No, that's, so, and this is why drives me nuts about LD two thousand three is that the titles of everything are so similar, it gets confusing. The, the smaller piece has to do with the accessory dwelling unit. This is additional dwelling unit, so essentially you can construct. Four units, they could all be the same size, or you could make them different sizes if you want to as developer. But it's four living units on that lot.
And our comprehensive plan says the rules on this.
So you have. Did, I think I still have the map handy. Now granted, you're also updating your comp plan, so you could also change where the growth ordinance area is, but. I don't have your dish, I don't have this overlayed on your zoning, but it's essentially the green, the light green area. And it's, this is something our office just came up with because the map has been lost in the ether and at the town office. But your growth districts are village one, village two, village waterfront, residential, rural, commercial. The plan development, route one corridor, insurance land business, two marine overlay.
Recognizes the plan, that's totally different topic.
Exactly, which we don't. Exactly, which we don't have time. Um, but, so. Um, so you have a, a, a pretty decent sized, um, growth area in terms of, you know, this, this green area. I mean, it's also, I don't, I don't know if you agree with this, Dennis. It's also one thing we could leave as written for now and bring up at the select board meeting on the nineteenth.
I didn't include it now, presented to the select board.
With the, have it be in a single unit? Okay.
How, how would you allow to be in a single unit? That's my personal feeling. Anybody feel different?
No, which I think that's the.
Why does it matter? Can you explain that to me? I think it has more to do with like a matter of scale. So if you have a property, say my box meets zoning, I can fit septics. I can either design it so I have four separate houses or units, or I could be stuck. If you say that it has to be contained within a single building, it's gonna look like that and then it's gonna be one, two, three, four, or it could be, I mean, it could be linear too. So it's one, two, three, four, something like that. But it's, you have a lot more area on your property. Um, it also gives the developer a little bit more room to play with it because if I'm developing it in one building, I can have one septic system or field and that's, it's gonna have to be a big field, but I then also have room to put my well head over here that's servicing it and meet the separation distances. So I think there is some benefit from the developers.
It's become more affordable to the end user because of course the developing of the project is gonna be lower.
Yeah. And there's supposed to be an affordable housing.
Well, the affordable housing piece is meant to be affordable. Everything else, so whether it's the accessory dwelling unit or the additional dwelling units, doesn't necessarily speak to affordability. It's more about getting more units built in general, whether they're market rate, a short term rental, whatever. We know that Maine has a shortage of units. Um, so this doesn't necessarily speak to the affordability, but the hope would be that some of these could be turned affordable because it's a lot cheaper to construct because you're not clearing as much. You don't have to clear as much land, um, et cetera.
And it probably is gonna be easier to get that one unit on that lot as opposed to four. So that increases the number of housing units potentially that we could get there. So I, I, I agree.
It's cheaper to build one than not. That's what a ranch costs more than.
Okay. This next group.
So I guess I, I personally like the individual better because I want to see more restrictions. So, um, I don't, I don't know that I agree, I guess, with everybody on here, one for one building.
That's, that's the great thing about this. You can disagree.
Yeah. Uh, Oscar's suggestion that we would, because it comes down to a matter of language, we would allow that it be either or, or are you restricting it to only being contained solely either or? Okay.
The vast number will choose.
Hmm?
Vast number of developers will choose a separate structure.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
We had somebody came to the planning board last year who wanted to build a house with a couple of units attached to up on twenty seven. I don't remember their name, but it's basically, yeah, that was his thing there. He wanted to be able to have space for his in-laws if they got sick and, and he wanted to be able to rent some of it and live in some of it and, uh, it made sense.
And also clarify that if they're, if they're building four, they would be coming to planning board. So it's not just a simple building permit where there's no public opinion allowed or public comment allowed on it. Or it's a subdivision. So they would be coming to the planning board and there's a significant review process that's tied to that. Then it also includes public, um, input, a public comment period.
And notify it.
And nobody, nobody's right.
Subdivision frequently has, uh, can have a, a requirement.
Yeah. So then the rest of this kind of speaks to if you either already have an existing dwelling unit on the lot or depending on where you're located. So if you're not in a growth area not tied to public sewer and water, it changes the number. Um, so you may get, you know, one additional unit or up to two additional units, you know, if you have an existing lot. So it would be, you know, two or threes on those properties. Again, it still goes back to having to meet all of the other requirements. Um, and this is a language, again, that's taken pretty much from LD two thousand three. And then, uh, one thing we didn't talk about in ADUs, but, uh, it is tied to accessory dwelling units as well, is that LD two thousand three clarifies that anything that's established either in the accessory dwelling unit or the additional dwelling unit piece is not going to supersede either private, state or local standards, which could be more restrictive. Um, and that also includes, you know, deed restrictions, um, homeowners association regulations. So I use my property as an example. I have a deed restriction that says I cannot have any outbuildings. So on my property, LD two thousand three isn't gonna be of any use to me because my deed, my private, you know, personal deed says I'm not allowed any more buildings. So unless I could get, you know, the planning board to change that, I'm stuck not being able to build an accessory dwelling unit. So there's probably other properties in town that may have similar restrictions. And then again, I added, uh, the last one, ten point ten is the same. There were double dipping laws as is allowed and as is stated in the accessory dwelling unit section. Are there any questions on either the additional dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit piece, other than I will add in that language that, um, for the four units, it could be contained within one building or separate, uh, detached units?
So we're gonna do either or.
Yes.
And then share with each to do two singles and a double.
Yeah.
Yeah. So under ten point one, Jackie, it'll be clarified that those up to four units allowed on that lot could be contained either within a single building or as separate units, separate detached units or some combination to get to the four. But essentially it's, it's the developers.
Choice.
Choice. And then the last, well, actually, one of any substance really is the, um, so in getting comments back from the select board around whether or not to regulate short term rentals, the select boards that they wanted to use kind of a light touch where an operator of a short term rental establishment, so an Airbnb or a Verbo or something like that, would have to go for a business license. And could, the select board asked, could we just add a simple sentence or two to the business license, um, section that states that? So I stuck it right under the purpose of provisions for business licenses where it talks about, you know, what business activities and enterprises include. Um, so it already says in there for the purposes of this section, business activities and enterprises shall include any person or persons carrying on the businesses, trades, professions, or selling of goods in any establishment that serves or prepares food or drink for public consumption. And then in red, I added, for the purpose of this section, operators sort operators of short term rental establishments must obtain a business license. Um, and then the glossary, which we'll get to in a minute, I have defined, uh, short term rental, um, and the select, uh, select minimum loaning, it's adjusted twenty nine days so that it, someone doesn't qualify for general assistance. So, um, when we get to the glossary section, we can talk about that definition in more detail, but essentially it's anything that's rented for less than twenty nine days. Not counting a motel, hotel per in.
Sounds good to me.
That's the business license section. Um, and then the glossary, which is kind of the thickest and it's your last packet within this, um, the handouts that I gave you tonight. So it starts as, you know, page four of three. The definitions that you see have been added, come from LD two thousand three. So since we have accessory dwelling unit regulations, it makes sense to have a definition. Same with affordable housing development, which talks about what qualifies for that. Um, so that's that, you know, fifty one percent of area median income. Um, then different percentages for owned housing versus rental housing. Um, we define what area median income is. Again, that's straight from, um, LD two thousand three, same with attached dwelling unit. So if you're sharing a wall, what does that mean? Um, base density. So we know what to do that, um, density calculation for. Um, others that are kind of standard are sewer system, comparable sewer system, centrally managed water system, a conditional use. Density requirements, designated growth area. Um, I tweaked a couple of definitions, starting with, um, dimensional requirements where, um, I tried to just clean it up slightly. So we had originally said, talked about numerical standards relating to spatial relationships, including but not limited to setback lot area, shore frontage and height. Um, I added in some language from LD two thousand three, which changes it to read requirements which govern the size and placement of structures, including but not limited to the following requirements, building height, lot area, minimum frontage, setbacks and lot depth. Um, and then I also did a little bit of wordsmithing with dwelling unit and took out the term for one family. Uh, family is kind of a more antiquated term and it goes against, depending on how you define it, can go against, um, uh, HUD laws and other laws. So I figured let's just take out the four one family and everything else to me made sense. So I just took out that small, made that small language change. And then I also, um, you had to find, um, you know, multi-family and single family and other sections. So I figured I would cross those out under, um, dwelling unit and have them do their own definition, which you'll find throughout. Added in the term existing dwelling unit. Since it's, again, if, if it's talked about in the ordinance, my thought was we may as well define it. Some of this may feel a little bit overkill, but I'd rather be, um, more straightforward than less. You keep going, uh, there's a definition of potable, which comes directly again from LD two thousand three. So that's tied to, um, if someone comes in with an ADU application to the code enforcement officer, or they're coming to the planning board for, um, an affordable housing development, we have something, they have to prove that their water is potable. And this gives a definition for what that means. And then I guess tied to that. I know, right? And tied to this, one of the things I talked to a DECD about was so in Booth Bay, I'm working with them on their LD two thousand three changes as well, and they had asked the question that they have, some properties have seasonal water. So technically they have a public water supply because it's more than sixty days in service. However, if someone's coming and they're trying to get, let's say, the affordable density requirements and they're coming to the planning board and their own public water is, you know, sixty days available or or ninety days available, but the other nine months out of the year, um, their water is not potable. They don't have a adequate well. The planning board still has the ability to find like, is this considered potable water? And they can say to that developer, like, no, this, this, your water does not meet what you're asking for in terms of density. And so there is still some, um, wiggle room, if you will, at the local level or the planning board to make that determination, um, per DECD using that example. So I think, you know, they have, they can submit a well driller certificate, but, um, you know, you as the planning board could ask for more information if, if necessary. If there's a question about like, well, you're putting in an affordable development, it's not tied to the public water supply, or if it is tied to public water supply, typically our site ordinance, uh, site plan ordinance requires that they have to get sign off and some kind of get a letter from the water district saying that they can handle the increase in that density. So there's still something for the, the locality.
They've never done, ours has never done.
True.
Do we need an official designated growth map? Let's just, we'll go through where the comprehensive, comprehensive plans were raised again. Somebody comes through after this doesn't affect until I want and wants to put it in an area that is not shown on that map. Do we have any way of saying, no, you can't put that?
I would think so because even though you don't have a beneficial map, like the one I Laura in my office put together, I have clearly defined for discussion purposes only because we didn't write the comp plan. You have it listed. This comes directly from your comp plan and you did it by district versus, you know, so if it, if you're looking at the zoning map and they are in the rural district, it is clearly stated that the rural district is not in a growth area. Well, there's no, um, they don't fall out of like, um, effect anymore. There's not, the, the ten year period is no longer our requirement. So if you have a comp plan, even if it's from two thousand eight, it's still valid. I mean, I guess that's technically a question for, like, your town attorney.
I guess that would definitely be for the town attorney. I'm not sure, but if the comp plan is actually enforceable like this is.
Well, your growth, the way it's defined is, it talks about your growth area would be in the town of Wiscasset's plan. So it does go back to whatever you're existing.
Hey, can I call you back? I'm in the ordinance review meeting. Okay, I'll FaceTime you.
One of the things I've been trying to.
I think we're not, I think.
Must find is it.
It's consistent.
It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I think that's, that's what we dropped down. That'd be our Friday morning.
So I took the definition of designated growth area from LD two thousand three, which says an area that is designated, designated in the comprehensive plan is suitable for orderly residential, commercial or industrial development, or any combination of those types of development and into which most development projected over ten years is directed. Do you want to add a line that says, or that more clearly spells out consistent with the Wiscasset comprehensive plan? How do you?
Are we not on that idea?
Probably not.
So for designated growth area, we will change it to read an area that is designated in the current town of Wiscasset comprehensive plan as suitable for orderly residential, commercial or industrial development or any combination of those types of development and into which most developed projected, or most development projected over ten years is directed. Or we, we can even take out the ten year piece and just leave it at into which most development is projected, or most development projected is directed.
Take out the ten years. That makes sense.
Especially if we're not recording or revising the copy on every ten years. Which all just like a timeline and not being calculated every ten years.
Or instead of an area that is designated in the current town of, town of Wiscasset comp plan, how about the the growth area as designated, or how do we, the growth area designated in the policies and strategies of the comp, I mean, how detailed do you want to, to get to spell it out? Or are you okay if we just say the town of Wiscasset comprehensive?
That covers everything. I, I, I think a little generally.
Okay. So far, we have, the only changes I have from you are the updated growth, uh, designated growth area definition and that the, uh, four. And that's the four unit piece under the affordable. Okay.
I'm sorry, under the affordable.
So we're under designated growth area. Oh, and then under the, so if we back up a section to the development standards for the additional dwelling unit piece, where you can have four units on, up to four units on a lot. We're just clarifying how that may look, whether it's contained within one unit or separate units. So then the only other definitions, everything else in here is really just pretty clearly tied directly back to LD two thousand and three. How I define short-term rental, I took the languages, I looked at other towns. So I looked at Kittery, Freeport, Bar Harbor, Rocklands. There was one other that'll come to me, but they had similar language in how they define short-term rental, but the number of days was different. And I know Selectman Maloney had suggested twenty-nine days so that if someone could not be eligible for general assistance, the general assistance fund. So you'll see on page four twenty-five, I have defined short-term rental as the use, control, management or operation of a legally existing dwelling unit in whole or in part for dwelling, sleeping or lodging purposes for fewer than twenty-nine consecutive days and for compensation directly or indirectly. Short-term rentals do not include motels, hotels and bed and breakfasts. A short-term rental does not include legally existing dwelling units that are rented no more than twice per calendar year and for less than a total of fourteen days in a calendar year. Changes to that?
Can you imagine anybody renting an Airbnb and then coming for general assistance?
You're just squatting.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know that it'll ever come to that, but.
Did you see the case in California though, the woman that's been squatting in that guy's house for what?
Two years.
Two years or something like that, five hundred something.
It happened in New York a lot too. Because you had a, if you lived there for, I think it was like a hundred and eighty days, it was considered your residence, whether you pay rent or you actually own the building or the lot.
The world is crazy.
And then the only other definition that wasn't directly spelled out in LD two thousand and three, but figured since the intent is that should someone want to count in a tiny home as an accessory dwelling unit, it probably makes sense to define what a tiny home is. So I took the definition directly from state statute. So you'll see that on page four twenty-eight. I don't know if you feel it's necessary to have that definition in here. But thought it would be helpful to add for at least discussion purposes tonight.
If you're trying, or we can qualify this.
It can qualify as an accessory dwelling unit, because an accessory dwelling unit, they, the state required that you set a minimum size of a hundred and ninety square feet.
Even if it's a vehicle without motor?
Well, that's why I added the definition in, because it doesn't talk about that in LD two thousand and three. So the tiny home definition kind of just further describes that if someone's coming in with a tiny home and the code enforcement officer wants some teeth to say, no, that isn't a tiny home, that's just a vehicle or a trailer.
It's just a camper.
Right, right. So wait, is this, is this saying, is a vehicle without motor power that they, that that is considered a tiny home?
Tiny home can't have a motor.
Can't be a camper.
You can't drive a tiny home. It could be towed.
But can the vehicle be considered a home?
A school bus could be considered a home.
But can the vehicle be considered a home? Yes, so it's, it's considered a tiny home if it complies with one or four. But then it says that it does not, you know, tiny home does not put a trailer, semi-trailer, camp trailer, recreational vehicle or manufactured housing. And that's the state's definition. You didn't what?
Said I didn't read that. What's recreational? Is a class A normal recreation vehicle.
Is a what?
Is a class A normal home, recreational.
I don't know. I can look at state, you can look there, defined as a recreational vehicle.
A vehicle or attachment to a vehicle designed to be towed. And designed for camper sleeping or living quarters, one person sandwich man, with a pickup camper, travel trailer tent, trailer camp trailer and motor hang in order to be considered as a vehicle, not as a structure. The unit must remain with its, remain with its tires on the ground. And must be registered in a state division of motor vehicles.
Yeah.
What happens when you take the tires off and put it up? And are you a, I'm not sure if you're still going to fall under.
I believe in one of our ordinances, it defines that. If you take the tires off it and you're going to park it, then it will be considered a dwelling unit. But then it can't be a dwelling unit because it won't meet the standards for.
Plumbing and water.
That and exits and all that other stuff. So that's addressed somewhere. I can't remember. It's either the floodplain or the shoreline zone ordinance. I can't remember which one it is.
But I remember reading somewhere.
I've got it marked off. It might actually. Well, that's exactly why I want to know the answer.
And I remember where you started up for something about plates somewhere. It's not a good one. I don't remember. We haven't found it. It's more covered.
You mean you haven't memorized the whole book, Jackie?
The line is hanging in the weirding where I exit the toilet paper.
Is that a crack in case of emergencies?
Backup.
Right.
I was just gonna say, can we put it on soft paper?
Sorry, Bob. Remember reading that somewhere.
I don't remember it quite that way as far as taking wheels off, but if you look in the shoreline zone ordinance, one fourteen, five, seven. It's gonna be there more than a hundred and twenty days. It shall meet all the requirements of a residential structure. Including wastewater and.
And that limits it to our shoreline zone in which we do not have a lot of activity.
But this goes beyond, is the shoreline, correct or not?
It's, so I've had this discussion with your attorney quite a bit. Here's, here's the issue that I have with campers and living in campers in town. We have one ordinance that speaks specifically to recreational vehicles. That says they shall not be used as a dwelling unit unless they're in a campground. However, they may stay temporarily on property as long as they meet these three small requirements. Temporary is not defined. So if you look at our floodplain ordinance, temporary is defined as a hundred and eighty days. And you look in the shoreline zoning ordinance and it's defined as a hundred and twenty days. So which one of these, which one of these do you apply to the one that says temporary?
And what if it's beyond the shoreline?
That's what I mean. So if, if you've got, if you look at, if you look at section ten miscellaneous, section seven, it speaks just to recreational vehicles.
Which, what's, oh.
So it's unmiscellaneous, which is ten.
Page number nine.
Yeah.
Two twenty-five. That's an easier way.
I don't have a miscellaneous. No, we'll tap. Two twenty-five, okay.
So we'll get section seven. So it says, you can't use an RB as a dwelling unit in Wisconsin. So that, that's, that part is pretty clear. It says you, you may stay temporarily on private property as long as you meet those three conditions.
Being water, sewer and electric?
No, no. It says it has to comply with main regulations regarding sanitary waste and sewage disposal. Which means they can't dump it on the ground. They have a holding tag. That's fine. As long as they're not dumping it on the ground. They have it pumped out. They're taking it to wherever to, to get rid of it.
But can't the ordinance or planning board make, you have to at least meet the state requirement, but can't they make that stricter?
This doesn't require planning board approval.
Well, interesting.
And so we have several places in town where people are living in campers and we're trying to enforce something that's.
Not enforceable.
It's, it's hard. It's like, okay, what's temporary? Six months, six years, six days? Well, the shoreline zoning ordinance says it's so many days, but the floodplain ordinance says it's so many other days.
The nice thing about this is that the shoreline and the floodplain are gonna overlap each other. But they only cover two hundred and fifty-sixth of annual water.
True. So, you know, and they're talking to the attorneys like, well, we can, you know, we can take one of the requirements from one of the other ordinances and kind of apply it to that. But if, if you end up in court, it gets a little bit harder for a judge to make that determination.
You can also just write it in there.
So really that, that section, that recreational vehicle ordinance needs to be more specific as to what temporary is. And I think that's just a simple wordsmithing thing. Hundred and eighty days or hundred and twenty days or whatever it is, you decide to, you decide to do that.
So do you need action from the planning for the?
Well, not on the recreational vehicle piece. But for the, if there's no other questions about all the LD two thousand and three stuff, so the changes that you see in the summary of which I provided to you tonight, I would ask that you vote to schedule this for a public hearing on December twelfth at the planning board meeting.
I make the motion that we schedule this for a public hearing the next day.
Can I ask a quick question? Are we voting on how it's written? That?
Would the amendments we've made tonight?
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Just bring it up for the public hearing is the motion.
Nice touch at that.
That has been seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing, I was in favor of forwarding it to a public hearing.
Aye.
Oh, as opposed, one one against, or as four. All right. Next order of business.
So we can probably go through this quickly. I was gonna say, not too much time, but it hopefully shouldn't be, it's too expensive. It's coordinate committee request to look at the solar ordinance. To make a couple of clarifications. So the first handout that I gave you was just a copy of Dennis's letter, which is dated November second, asking for some clarification on, in the ordinance, me, when it was written, the ORC kind of unintentionally didn't fully clarify for roof mounted systems that serve a single-family dwelling or for ground mounted solar that's less than forty-two hundred square feet inside. I believe the intent was to allow it in other zones and not restrict it just to the rural zone, but the way it's written, when you read it in black and white, restricts it just to the rural zone. And so we also, Dennis asked that we also clarify that for those systems, so that roof mounted system on a single-family residence or ground mounted solar that's less than forty-two hundred square feet, that it would require a building permit from the code enforcement officer, but wouldn't necessarily need to go for full site plan review like the larger scale solar systems that have come to the planning board previously. So with this information from Dennis and this request, I updated and submitted to you the second packet in your handout. Some changes to the solar energy conversion system ordinance, essentially making those clarifications. So under sixteen point six point one applicability, that's where I clarified that a building permit issued by the code enforcement officer is required for roof mounted systems serving a single-family residential dwelling and ground mounted systems less than forty-two hundred square feet. And then I referenced the building law, article two, section of the ordinance. Then if we continue on, under sixteen point seven dimensional standards, under sixteen point seven point two, I broke it out into two subsections under setbacks and talked about that, and it's also where we define the rural district. So for roof mounted solar systems that serve a single-family dwelling and ground mounted systems that are less than forty-two hundred square feet would be subject to the setbacks from the property lines equal to whatever the required minimum setback of the district is in which they are located. And then the larger scale, still limiting them to the rural district, but just clarifying that a little bit further. And then under citing and impact, section sixteen point eight point one, again, I kind of spell out the allowed location. So talking that roof mounted systems serving a single residential dwelling and ground mounted roof systems or ground mounted systems less than forty-two hundred square feet are allowed within all zoning districts. And leaving it that those solar conversion energy system panels, so that larger scale development would be allowed only in the rural zone. Questions, comments? I know we only have a few minutes, but. What is the thought behind a building permit issued by the code enforcement officer required for roof mounted systems serving a single residential? Well, I can see the ground mounted one, but what's the thinking behind the roof mounted one? So if you're putting, if you're adding to your building, you would want a building permit to make sure, you would need a building permit to make sure that it's installed properly, wired correctly. So heaven forbid you're not creating some type of fire hazard. Site plan review seems excessive for that development on a single-family residence. And so that's why we, I clarified that you'd be going to the code enforcement officer for a building permit, but you wouldn't have to go over it. It doesn't require a site plan review like a large-scale solar farm. Okay.
I'm still somewhat confused by sixteen point eight. Less than forty-two hundred. Shouldn't I say something like all other children's reviews? Confused is my question.
So we define solar energy and solar energy conversion system. That's where it's talking about kind of like our larger scale. And I just took the same language that we have had throughout the rest of this ordinance where we, we define the difference or use the language difference between the roof mounted systems that serve a single-family dwelling and ground mounted systems that are less than that forty-two hundred square foot. And then all others we just refer to as energy conversion systems. Meaning anything that's above forty-two hundred square feet or not serving a single-family roof mounted solar that's serving single-family residents. Certainly we can make more wordsmithing changes. Dennis, I don't know if your intent was to get this onto the warrant for March as well.
If we can. I've already bumped up against this with somebody that's, that's wanting to do something. So.
Forty-two hundred square feet is a lot of area.
So a solar conversion energy system is larger than forty-two hundred square feet. Is that basically the same?
So if it's larger than forty-two hundred square feet, it's only allowed in the rural zone?
I think forty-two hundred square feet was the original amount in the ordinance.
Right, I didn't change the size. That's what we had in there. So then how about I? So then how about I write solar conversion energy system panels greater than forty-two hundred square feet?
Okay.
Shall only, and shall only be, instead of shall be only allowed.
That takes the plot away from that, right? It's also required.
Yes.
We have a motion to forward these changes to the planning board for public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we forward these to the selectmen for a public hearing.
That's planning board.
I'm sorry, for planning board public hearing.
I second.
Second, any comments, questions? All those in favor? Any amendments?
Carl, were you guys gonna send me something on the setbacks for this electorating?
Uh, setback, we talked about increasing it to fifteen from ten, and I always talk about increasing the road, road setback. But I don't think there's a town, a little push to the chest, it doesn't have a setback water dripping. Hi, is there any other business? Coordinates review committee tonight.
Can I make my favorite motion?
Six fifty-five, can I make a motion where you're?
I second.
Thank you, folks. A lot of work.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Sure.
Let me do a nice job with that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
So I will make those three minor changes, the one to the solar ordinance and then the two for the LD two thousand three, either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. Jackie, are you putting in the notice?
Yeah.
Okay. I can tell you what sections, I don't know what he's, and I can give you upsets at any time, but I don't know how else to think of it.
Well, well. I can do a very general leave, changes to the, um, ordinance that we're doing here, solar energy conversion.
And then the article. Cause I give, if you. Yeah, and if you use this, the summary, give you, I call out which article and section has changed for each of you, if you need to get specific, otherwise. Yeah, thank you, I'm just, I'm still like, I was on the planning board in school the whole time, so I'm still trying to learn like the difference in that, the order they keep in. And it's different. So, yeah. Yeah, cause we did a lot of ordinance work as the planning board.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that's why I'm still kind of learning what actually happened. But yeah, I like this part, like, it's kind of fun. We're glad you. Um, and then if you want to.
My voice or opinion of them to let them have a public hearing before.
Your work, your work under the task, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring that. Give your comments about the four, and then how it's about. So, so, so that was the town of Huthay Harbor, they made changes. When the deadline was still.
No, I got off the boss, he don't fly, they, it's already dead.
So somehow at a deadline and put it up on their warrant and the town residents. I don't know, I don't know what the state is, oh, you're gonna go, because there's technically no. So there's, it's that ramification where you're. Interesting, all right. Thank you, yes, yes, I just think they're all they can talk to. Oh, here, I have, we are my, hold on, here's the solar one, so this is. And this is the sun, and then this is the solar, just talking about the. Yes. So they, um, scheduled it to December eleventh. For a town, for a public. They're waiting for a public hearing, um, Monday, December eleventh. That's awful, are you feeling it? I think so, but I think they make some. Yeah. Did anyone pick it up?
Central Eastern. We went through seven lots, so every other day, yeah, mental lot in twenty or thirty, yeah.
And the cost? Wisconsin? Hopefully, um, and then I'm working with the town.
All right, being seven oh two, a forum being present, I'm calling the November twenty-seventh meeting of the Wisconsin Planning Board Order. First order of business, the approvals minutes of November thirteenth.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of November thirteenth.
Second. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Or, yes, standing, standing for one. They have been passed. First order of business, I speak your ruling, so plan review application for Bupa eleven and twelve on Main Street. Again? Good evening. You quantified everybody's in two hundred and fifty feet, have, can you submit, and have you submitted copies of that?
I have submitted copies, sorry, did they copy? Of the, uh, fine.
That was one of the main, uh, calls, you know, we pulled on the last meeting. Uh, I'm not sure of public here interest, so. Who's understood, but could you explain to me for what it is you'd like to do at Main Street?
Sure, like to have a tap room as an outlet for my current brewing operation in Huthay Harbor. Uh, and I will brew small amounts of beer, uh, totally no more than a hundred gallons a year there. I have spoken to Seward, they said it wouldn't be a problem, I would just have to pay, uh, an impact fee, which we would determine when I get closer to it.
Uh, does something on my, that will, the applications agree?
I make a motion, the application which was presented at the last meeting is, was completed at this meeting.
Is there a second? Second. Any comments? All those in favor of any application, please? She wants? So, standing.
Yeah. Did you upstairs?
Oh, no, I wouldn't be at all.
Yeah.
A site visit is optional.
So, just to jog your memory, uh, Jeremy also submitted a waiver request from having to submit a recent site survey and the accompanying, everything that goes along with that, so total, all those other requirements. Um, and then also requested that if you grant those waivers for it to be considered de minimis, given that it's less than twenty-five hundred square feet and could be reviewed, um, essentially administratively by your planner.
There's a motion on the floor to grant waivers, he asked, almost all the answers are basically because it's not changing the exterior of the building at all. And then to allow the county, the contracted county planner to review the project.
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom, I make a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Any amendments, congratulations, she's got somebody who works every day.
Thank you very much.
I'll be in touch with you.
All right, excellent, we'll talk to you soon.
Yeah.
Thanks, Stephen. Yeah, definitely need you on behalf of novel energy solutions.
Complimentous determination.
Yes, that would be, yeah.
First question.
Yes.
How large are the panels, I see you're talking fifteen hundred and sixty panels, what size are the panels?
I totally, that was sent over, um. Let me just see if I can find that. Find that divided by two sensors. So. There's sixteen hundred panels, each one in, in area of twenty-three point four square feet, which equals thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty square feet for eight point eight five nine waivers.
There's each panel of what, thirty-seven square feet?
Twenty-three point four oh. Yes.
And now you said there's only, how many?
Sixteen hundred.
One of the sixteen.
You have fifteen sixty, around fifteen. So is it rounding ten or?
I'm sorry.
Uh, you have three fifteen sixty on our application, is that? So, I don't have any difference.
It works out to sixteen hundred at the size.
That fifteen hundred and sixty solar panels came from page three of your introductory narrative.
Yeah.
But page one is an introduction, then the description with all the project team contact information. And then page three, under site appearance and impact. The first sentence is the parcel will consist of five hundred kilowatt solar garden with one thousand five hundred and sixty solar panels.
So, I can stipulate, we'll go to the fifteen sixty since that's in everything.
Okay.
Th- this was our engineer who came up with this, so I don't exactly know how that was, but on, on that other thing that was also sent over, it was the map. So the distance is two hundred and forty-three feet, if you might remember at the last meeting, there was a public question about how far it is from the stream. So it's two hundred and forty-three feet.
Okay. Someone, do you want to hold this?
Oh, it doesn't matter, I have to get both. Um, so as is typical, whenever you, we get a new site plan application, I put together a memo going through the completeness determination. So looking at all of the submission requirements that are outlined in the site plan review ordinance, um, and seeing what is met. Um, so the first is that the application applicant should confirm whether the application fee has been submitted to the town office. Uh, I received an email, and I think Carl, you did too, around three thirty, four o'clock today, that that has been paid with a copy of the receipt, so that has been taken care of. The other items on here include, um, that we typically require that the bearings and distances of all property lines of the property to be developed and the source of this information verified by a professional land surveyor as a recent boundary survey. The submitted existing conditions plan states the property lines were GIS acquired. So I asked that the applicant confirm whether the property lines were surveyed in the field.
They were, and they're also going back out, because what you asked was to have it staked out, as well as the setback stayed back, staked out so you can do a, a review. So we will also submit another updated report as well.
So we have to have a plan signed, but the current survey, I mean, that's a six-monthly signed by a land surveyor, probably any question?
Yeah, so that's what we're gonna do, uh, with this, but there was also, uh, survey submitted initially, I believe, with the application.
Not signed by a land surveyor. I don't care who else signs it, but the boundary survey must be signed by a professional, meaning.
Right. That's what it's showing.
It was referenced to a plant title survey, but it's not included in the package.
Um, so then conjugal intervals have been shown, but not referenced in terms of geography, um, data. So just asking you to confirm that it's referenced to any of these.
We can provide that.
Yeah.
So then a question to the planning board is, um, typically require that major natural features on the site and within two hundred and fifty feet of the boundary of the site could be wetlands, streams, ponds, floodplains, groundwater aquifers, significant wildlife habitats, including your wintering areas, archaeological resources, or other important natural features. The boundaries of any wetlands depicted on the plan shall be delineated by an appropriate qualified professional. Um, and my comment under, um, number four here in my memo is the submitted site plan and existing conditions plan shows wetlands depicted. The submitted environmental due diligence report describes other natural features, are these materials sufficient to the planning board in order to check the box on that?
Um, I believe it also says that was all obtained by, um, records, or the information of records. Records, or the informational records, I think wetlands have to be, because it says we have to get them delineated by an appropriate qualified professional, at least wetlands have to be. Flag on location.
We can provide that as, not limited.
Oh, yes, number five, we typically require that the direction of existing surface water drainage flows across the site. That was not depicted on the existing conditions plans submitted as part of the applica- application. And so I recommend that the applicant should update the existing conditions plan to indicate the direction of existing surface wa- surface water drainage flow across the site.
And we have an updated stormwater management plan coming to you.
Okay.
It's being developed right now, just with the holiday and two months down.
The illustration of. What was Gerald's cross control, I assume, why it flows down there?
Sure, yes, that's, that's an easy.
It's not what I've always agreed with, but. Not over there, just to read from that.
So, number six is kind of just a technicality, but our ordinance states that the location, dimensions, including heights, building elevations, and ground floor elevations of all proposed building on the site, proposed use thereof. The location of the array has been shown on the proposed site plan as a building envelope, but do you want the setbacks of the array, so they're actually dimensioned from the property lines and wetlands?
Yes, yeah.
So we'll, we'll submit an updated site plan with that on it.
So for number seven, we require an approval block, so I would update the cover page on your plan set to have that shown. And then number eight is we also require a block for conditions of approval. I didn't know if the planning board wants that block on the site plan cover page, or if the finding of fact determination that will eventually come out of this would be sufficient.
Go to a statement on your cover sheet, see findings effect and conclusions of law. That references a two. I know you can do a better wording than I guess to.
And then number nine. In my memo, we, is we require the cost of the proposed development and of evidence of financial and technical capacity. The applicant submitted a letter from First Western Trust describing their financial capacity, however, cost estimate was not submitted.
We, we can certainly. Also, cost estimate of the project.
Yes, yes. I think that was submitted.
Yes.
It wasn't, it's pretty.
I believe we talked about that at the last meeting as well.
Yep.
In fact, our ordinance required that it was a five year.
Yes. The state, the state's fifteen years, I believe it was, but we have no problem. You know what it is, costs aren't going down, so.
Absolutely, of course they are. And while you look back, there's still us, obviously, I'm not sure we can find application complete.
Some other things have to come back.
All right, is the area gonna be staked anytime?
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm hoping for the first week in December, I put the request in after the last meeting. And I can call and follow up and let you guys know, but I put in the request, I have it done, I think by, might have been December third.
I think it's Saturday, Friday.
Or fr- uh.
Sunday is the third.
Yeah, so might, maybe it might have been December first.
My, my only question is, it's December, that way stuff's gonna start coming down, and we're not gonna wanna.
Trains and food, and snow.
Form a clearance, clear for it in a, in a, in two feet of snow. So, if we could, I wouldn't wanna schedule a site walk. In advance of finding the application complete. Does anybody have a problem with that? Now. It's been, I've been reminded that we, unlike our normal customer sending three, it's incorrect, the entire portion of the site work. So. I'm looking at it that way, Jerry.
My next meeting is December eleventh.
And it's dark, or is it anybody dark at, was it four fifteen?
Four o'clock.
You're gonna wanna not be out in the thick of it. Take a look today, you're gonna wanna be out here.
Wednesday, December.
Who was available on what day?
About Wednesday, December sixth.
That should work.
I can go.
We can do it what, three o'clock?
One, two, three.
Three o'clock just gives you time to get out of school and people to meet there. I can do it at three o'clock.
Three, I can, sure, yeah.
Yep.
All those who can possibly make a meeting will be there at three o'clock, Sunday sixth. It works, it'll be.
We should get in Stewart Wyman's driveway, because at least it's a place that we can all find each other.
Yeah.
I'll visit the house long from there, we'll be back into the.
Rough road down.
We'll carry us through the woods on your back.
Yeah, yeah, bus size ATV. We'll walk from there. All right. Do you have any questions for us?
So. We were, we were hoping to get at least this part done tonight, because we want, so scheduling the project, we'd like to order the stuff, because it takes many months to come in, and looking to do something in the spring. I mean, all this in, in itself aren't really big things, because some of them are already in the works to, to get over.
Just a matter of them being in an event of a meeting.
There's no way to deem it complete contingent on everything coming in?
So many things, listen, it's not like you're missing one thing, there's a lot of stuff, including site surveys and stuff, but.
I know that, no doubt we can get it together before my next meeting, but. But that means we would be scheduled enough public hearings, time limits. That's too early without seeing all the paperwork that's involved, because we don't look at the paperwork until after the public hearing. Yeah, the next meeting is Christmas, so. And the meeting after that is Christmas Day.
So you would have to submit everything by this noon on December fourth, in order to make the December eleventh meeting to be mandatory. And then, the following meeting after that falls on Christmas Day, so it wouldn't be until the January meeting. On the eighth.
So. Everything would have to be in by noon December fourth to be on the January meeting?
No, it would have to be, if you wanted to get on the December eleventh meeting to get a completeness determination.
So that we can set up a public hearing for the following, for the January, what was it?
So you would need, right, so. If you want a completeness determination on December eleventh, all the outstanding items would need to be submitted by noon on Monday, December fourth. In order to get on the December eleventh meeting, then, because we don't meet on the twentieth, then, we meet on January eighth. So you would need to get things filed. By, well, January one is the Monday prior, so you'd be looking at December.
Which is a holiday.
Right, so you'd wanna file before December twenty ninth, to get on the January eighth meeting.
And who advertises that, it would be done at the next, at the December eleventh meeting, we would do the.
Correct, so.
If we should.
Right.
I'm sorry, which, what are we doing?
So, the public hearing, the earliest would probably be done would be January eighth.
Well, they don't understand, so, okay, that's, that's quite well out, but, but I don't have to worry about that.
No, no. We're only noticing our seat.
Sorry.
We, we sent out notices for this meeting, and also referenced the next meeting as well, is that sufficient? As you said, it didn't have to be certified mail this time, because the first one we did certified mail.
Just people here, I'm sure, have questions. Let's see, if we tabled his, the decision on. That's not the same, that's the meeting, it's just carrying, carries.
Two, yeah, I don't know that you have to renotice it, I'm just trying to look at the regard.
I make a motion we table this until the following meeting.
Second.
That way you know.
Second, well, in, in the note sent out, we did make reference to the, the following, the next meeting as well. So just, just. Okay.
Second. I was in favor of Tamer. Do you have any further, reach out to myself or Emily?
Great, thank you. Good day's evening, everyone. Great place, well. There's snow in general.
Or at least, anybody who might have any other questions about.
Awesome, what was that? I'm making a very young part.
Is anybody here having a question about this project? Next order of business is Matt Hatter slash Supress LLC, expansion of use for medical cannabis retail establishment. Bill, explain your project briefly, now that everybody's here before.
We just intend to repurpose a section to restore to. Provide for dedicated space for cannabis sales, it's, we don't tend to do anything to the exterior or forefront of the building. And. It's very simple. Or we're seeking a waiver on the site plan survey as well as the minimus status so that the planner can handle the balance for our project.
Okay. Why should I take your rule brewing, this is the same thing, and that they're not taking any changes to the interior of the building? So they ask for a waiver from the site, and all the related information that go on that, are we included with that? And that we turned over because of the current size, to the contracted county planner for review. What is the waiver motion on granting the waiver?
I make a motion.
Wait a second. Thank you, first and second, any comment, questions? Audience? All those in favor of granting waivers? I have a motion to turn this over to the county planner based on the size of the project.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of turning it over? Yes. Again, go to somebody who works five days.
Thank you very much. Good luck, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, the ORC sent two. Changes to ordinance change, actually more than that, because two changes will come with hearing to the, to the planning board for the next meeting. One has to do with the implementation of OD two thousand and three, which is the Affordable Housing Act. And the other one is to allow solar, solar rays, smaller, smaller rays in, other than the rules on. Other than what the rule.
Right now, just we that they can only go in the rules. So it's talking just about size for houses and stuff, little, little setups.
There are a couple of other minor things that makes it clear that you have to go in permanent, fill out the survey. Forty.
Forty-two hundred square feet, which is a lot. Yeah.
And so we will have those twelve occurring, so it is important to have a call.
At the next meeting.
At the next planning meeting. And now.
My favorite motion of the night, at seven twenty-nine PM, I make a motion we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Two hands go up.
Ananous. Hope see you a little bit.
Jackie, you're all set.
And then this is, uh, that's all, everything really.
That way you guys don't have to sit on, on your.
Oh, I have.
Yeah, my dog lives in the car most of the time. Much better than to be viewed.
So, this is what they were keeping tonight, there are a couple of. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, right, so, and it's, so, the, the process of all this, uh, the ORC would have signed off on this, and I could do those. Few changes, like, if it goes in the clean board, because it's on September eleventh, so it's not meant.